Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Holliston Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, April 29th. And before we start, I just need to read a couple of quick paragraphs. Pursuit to the Governor's Order Suspending Cert Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, MGL 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's Emergency Order dated March 16th, 2020. The Planning Board will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency actions requiring of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting, and also your address. At this time, we'll do a roll call for board members. David Thorne, present. Karen?
Karen Langton, present.
All right. And Scott?
Scott Ferkler, present.
Okay. And we may be having, somebody may be showing up, we're still waiting, but at this point we'll start because we have three of us here. I guess we'll start with the approval of the minutes. I don't know if you all have any questions in regards to that.
They look fine to me. I would, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Scott has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Karen has seconded. I guess we'll start. Karen?
Aye.
All right. Scott?
Aye.
And David, aye. Okay. He says he may be here, he's waiting, he says he's waiting on a COVID test. So we may, he may be here and he may not be, that's what he just texted me. So, next item is approval not required subdivisions.
There are none.
There are none, okay. I believe the next thing is Holliston Woods, release of surety.
This is the project, Pulte Homes on Washington Street in West Holliston, formerly known as Washington Hills. The project has been fully occupied for several years, and there's been a punch list that's been exchanged between the developer and the homeowners association. They worked out the final two issues in the last several weeks. So both the project engineer from Marshanda Associates and Ali have signed off on all the work. The last couple of items were one area drain around the unit that did not have an infiltration unit coming off the roofs, and some remaining landscaping that needed replacement. So if you vote to release surety, this is a, it's insurance policy that Pulte will simply cancel, but that's signed, sealed, and delivered on that project.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions? I don't know if either of you have any questions. Okay. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion? Either of you, I guess. It's just three of us.
Um, help me. Motion to release the surety bond for Holliston Woods. That's described by Karen?
Yep. Yep, in its entirety.
In its entirety, yeah.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scott is seconding. Okay. We'll start with you, Scott.
Aye.
All right. Karen?
Aye.
All right. And David, aye. Okay. So that's that. We don't have to sign anything, I guess. But okay. That takes care of that. Next is site plan review, SCS Marshall, 012252 Holliston LLC, 280 and 150 Marshall Street. Somebody here from?
You have Jeff Brandt, and did you say that Rennie was on the call as well? Yeah.
I see Jeff here.
Yep. Hi.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. For the record, Rennie Friedman, the Director of Project Development for Soul Systems. We are a national solar developer, financier, owner, and operator, and we are the applicant for this project. Just a brief background, we were awarded this project via a competitive RFP process set out by the town. We were awarded the project towards the latter part of 2019. I have been working on developing the project for the last year and a half. Jeff Brandt with TRC, they are lead civil and environmental engineers and consultants on the project, put together the final site plan. That is why we are here this evening.
Now, I don't know if, Jeff, I don't know if you had anything you would like to say or talk about, or it just?
Um, well, let's see. We've already been through the Select Board hearing and gone through that process. We're going through the Conservation Commission process as well right now to give a small amount of buffer zone impact. Well, we've worked really hard to minimize impacts of the project. There's stormwater report attached to our filing that demonstrates we comply with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards, and there won't be any increased runoff from the project that's above existing conditions already. And I just like these projects in general because they're using land that's already disturbed, we're not affecting new wetlands or forested areas. So in that respect, it's a good project, I think. But happy to hear to answer questions we have.
Charlie, I guess, Scott, did you have anything that you would like to ask?
Um, just so I can orient myself on the page, I have the, have the plan in front of me. So you're on the soccer field side of Marshall Street, sort of to the, to the south of where the soccer fields would be? Is that correct assessment?
Yeah.
Okay. And it looks like you expect the traffic impact of the site to be minimal? Is that a true statement?
Yeah, there's very little traffic. There's a little bit during construction, but then afterward, there's, there's almost no traffic, just occasional inspections, one or two pickup trucks coming.
Okay. Yeah, seems relatively straightforward. Thank you.
Karen, I didn't know if you had anything.
Yeah. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Um, I would like you to elaborate on that traffic impact during construction. I'd love to know what the phases are of construction, the timeline, and then looking at Part B of the application, what you would consider to be that circulation system of trucks, cars, what will they be doing, what will they be accessing, and looking at it from not only weekday, but looking at peak hour volumes, please.
Yeah. Jeff, maybe we knew to answer that, I can maybe give kind of a general overview of timeline of the project, and then the general kind of phasing, and then, and then yeah, see if there's any more questions after that. So just to give a general update on the timeline of the project overall, as noted, we were awarded the project the latter half of 2019. I've been working on it for the last year and a half. The critical path timeline of the project is the interconnection process. Any solar project of the size, or really any solar project at all, you need to go through the interconnection process with the local utility company in that area, in this case, Eversource. And that's to make sure that, you know, we are connecting our project, which is effectively a tiny power plant, into their existing grid, and they have a number of analysis that they need to run on their end to make sure that there will be no adverse impacts. I think as everyone is aware, there's a lot of solar that has happened in Massachusetts as a whole over the last number of years and still currently. So the interconnection process just takes a bit of time to, to work through. So, so that's been the critical path on the project. We're waiting on one more piece of information from Eversource, which will then kind of dictate to us when we're able to start construction on the system. We actually hope to, I was hoping to have it by the meeting tonight, but unfortunately I don't, but should have it very, very soon. Best case scenario is we would start construction in the fall of this year, but it's possible that the information we get back says that there is additional analysis they need to run that might take a bit more time, which could push construction starting out into the spring of next year. So kind of best case, we're looking at starting construction in the fall, worst case is the spring of next year. Once we do start construction on the site, the overall full build out is probably in the five to six month range, but most of that, most of what you would consider more typical kind of work would happen in the first two to three months. That's when all of the equipment gets delivered to the site, that's when all of the larger machines are on site moving that equipment around, setting the equipment up. That would be our concrete ballast blocks, our racking structure, our panels, batteries. That generally takes about two to three months, and then there's another, you know, three or so months of a lot of wiring, a lot of, you know, electrical work, a lot of testing, a lot of commissioning of the system. So for the first couple of months, in, in really the first month, there, you know, will be a number of tractor trailers coming to the site to deliver the equipment to the site, to, to deliver, you know, pallets of modules, inverters. Again, we're using, because it's a capped landfill, we need to set everything on the top of the landfill, so everything is anchored into concrete ballast blocks. So we're looking at precast blocks that were brought in by truck and set on top of the landfill, and everything's kind of built off of those. So as you can imagine, there'll, there'll be several trucks of those, and those deliveries, you know, mostly happen within the first month or so of the project. Those will happen during normal working hours during the week. That's our plan, that's our expectation. And, you know, typical construction type traffic to the site, and I guess what I mean by that is, you know, workers coming to the site, you know, personal cars and vehicles, things like that, you know, arriving on site in the morning, probably leaving on site late afternoon, again, pretty, pretty typical kind of timeframes for that. Again, most of, most of the bigger, bigger vehicles that would be coming to the site would be there earlier on, and then after that, it's more just, you know, personal cars and trucks and things of that nature. And in terms of access points to the site and where they'd be accessing it, I can share my screen, I don't know if that's allowable, I have a quick exhibit I could run through that kind of might be helpful for that. Or I'm happy to talk, talk through it.
You're, you're welcome to share your screen if you'd like.
Sure. That might be the easiest way to go. Can everybody see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay. So, great. So, you know, just to the earlier question about where the project's located, so here you can see where the soccer fields are up here to the north, here's the parking lot for the soccer fields here to the west. The, the main footprint of the project, where the solar panels are, is shown over here. And then this area here is where the battery storage is, is, is going. All of the access will be off of the, this existing access point here. See, a little bit, yes. A little bit more zoomed in version. Again, here we're just looking, this is the closed and capped landfill, here is the existing recycling center, and then here is the practice field, the, the game fields are actually further to the north, can't, you can't see those on, on this view. But there is an existing, I guess, kind of maintenance shed here, that there is an existing gated access point off of the road here, and this is the access point that we are going to use to bring everything to the site, both while it's being built and, you know, also for people's personal vehicles that are working on the project, as well as from a long-term maintenance and operations standpoint, this is where all of the access will be. So there is an existing access point, we will maintain the access to the maintenance shed here. I had a great conversation the other day with Tony and Jared that, you know, kind of run the Holliston Youth Soccer Association to coordinate with them. They noted that the other thing to make sure is that when they get the practice field mode, this is where the equipment comes in from. So again, they will still have that, that access there, but this will be the only access point to the project here. That answer your question, or are they happy to talk further about that, or answer any other specific questions?
I guess what I'm really wondering is, how, how prepared is this land to begin to take panels, or is there land work that has to be done to level it before you can actually work in it? I'm wondering really about that.
Yeah. So that's a great question, and I'll kind of answer in two parts, and Jeff, feel free to step in at any time if I, if I miss something here. So the first is the capped landfill itself, which is where all of the panels are going. The top of the landfill is relatively flat, and then as you start to go down the sides, it gets a little, a little bit more steep. We are staying on the flatter parts of the landfill, so, and, and it is a capped landfill, and of utmost importance is to, is to protect the cap. So there's very, very minimal earthwork that needs to be done, and it's really just bringing in a little bit of dirt, of fill material, just to kind of fill in some of the low spots that have developed over the last 30 years. So it's not earthwork operations, it's not bringing in, you know, tons of large yellow machines to move thousands of yards of dirt. It's not that. It's just bringing in a small amount of dirt, again, more just to fill in the low spots to make sure that everything will drain accordingly. We then bring in some stone to make sure everything's nice and flat, and then we kind of pu, put the concrete ballast on top of the stone. So there's actually very little prep work for this area itself, in terms of what you might think for a typical project. Again, it's, as Jeff noted, it's a great project, it's already a cleared area, so to install the, you know, panels, we're not clearing any trees, there's really no environmental impacts for this work here. There's also one of the permits that we are required to get and are in the process of obtaining, it's called a post-closure use permit, that's through Mass DEP. And as part of that permit, there's a lot of analysis that Jeff's team, TRC, has done to making sure that the extra weight that we're putting on the cap, both in a temporary condition when it's being built and in a permanent condition when it, once it is built, that that extra weight won't have an adverse impact on the cap. All the calculations have, have come back well, and again, that permit package is currently under review by Mass DEP. So in terms of the top part, again, there's very little site prep work, it's just more a typical, you know, kind of on top of the ground up kind of build here. The other area where there is a bit more site prep work is, is right here, this is where our equipment pad is going to be going, there is battery storage associated with this project, so this is where those are going. There is a little bit of clearing that, that needs to be done here, and a little bit of site prep work here to accommodate this. This will go on a poured concrete pad, so typical kind of site prep work that, that goes along there. I did want to note, if you have seen a previous version of this plan, this equipment pad was actually shown more over here in the corner of the, of the existing recycling center, but through working with the town and coordination efforts with Public Works and the Board of Health, it was determined that this would not be a suitable spot for it, as this area is needed by the town. So again, through further coordination efforts, we all agree that, that this spot where you currently see it would be a suitable home for it.
So I, I guess my, my, as I sit here and I do a little looking around on my map, and I'm just thinking that if you're going to need to be getting fill, so now we're talking about dump trucks coming in and out. It's been a big conversation in Holliston, a lot with traffic flow and direction and safety, et cetera. So I would want to, I would want to be, have some specificity about, about routes that are taken. I don't know if this is the time, Karen, wha, what do you think?
You're talking about reviewing sort of their staging program?
No, I'm talking about reviewing the fact that if in fact they're going to be accessing any sort of help for getting fill, we know where fill comes from in town, that we stay on the rooted numbers, and we're not cutting through neighborhoods or going by the elementary schools to do so. So I mean, I, I'm, I'm not having a really clear answer about how much impact that would be, and really how long that timeframe would be. I suppose maybe we should take a walk and go see the site.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Maybe it'd be an easier way to understand it. And we could see what it looks like. What does the board think about that?
I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? You're, you're okay. I think that would be great, to walk the site. That'd be terrific. I think we could set that up. So I guess at this point, unless there's more questions, I think at this point we would be continuing this, or continuing our discussion, once we have our review, because I believe there's still some pending things with some other, or some other conservation.
Someone has a question.
So you see a can raised, SZA.
Suzanne Adelman, South Street.
Hi, how are you?
Hello? Good, how are you?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Um.
Hi, thanks.
Good. Want to ask a question regarding the construction vehicles? Marshall Street is a very, as we, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes, oh yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Regarding the construction vehicles, what route will they be taking? Are they coming, is, is the plan that they come Washington, left onto Cortland and up Marshall Street, or are they coming through Hopkinton? I'm imagining these are going to be pretty good-sized vehicles, and it's a very windy road. So I'm just curious whether they've, you've worked that out yet? Or is that part of what Karen was just discussing with the dump trucks?
So, so we haven't chosen our contractor yet, so the exact routes have, have not been worked, have not been worked out. I guess just maybe a couple other thoughts there, things to note. So one is, as folks are aware, the town recycling center is here, you know, so not that this receives the same, you know, tractor-trailer type of trucks that would be coming here, but, you know, presumably there are rather large vehicles that, that do need to, you know, access this area, so, so there is, again, some of that traffic already on the road. And I didn't mention this specifically earlier in the presentation, but I do just want to note that, you know, this site, put it on this landfill here, this was a site that was chosen by the town prior to the RFP being issued several years back. So, you know, as, as we were the select, chosen bidder for the project, you know, we were not involved in any conversations that the town may have had prior to the RFP coming out in terms of, you know, I, I suppose it's possible that these issues were maybe already brought up then and, and talked through, but it was before our involvement in the, in the project there. But, but again, I did just want to note those couple of items.
Yeah, I mean, I think really, you know, Rennie, what we're talking about is, and really what my specific questions are about, is that during that part of the construction phase, we, regardless of the fact of who just, you know, who, who grant, you know, how you won this, I mean, it's to us for that specific reason now, and the circulation system is part of those questions. So it is something that we want to have a good handle on, and we want to be able to understand it because we want to be proactive, not reactive. So, and I think that that's part of the reason why I said I think we should go take a walk and take a look, and let us get a good gauge, and then maybe we could come back with a little more specific question, and maybe at that time you could kind of let us know, like, well, you know, what are the possible routes that these vehicles could be coming? You must have some kind of idea of who you typically work with. So it would, in, in a general sense, we could know our, our, our trucks coming in from the north, are they coming in from the south? Like where, where are they typically going to come from? You know, you've, I'm sure you've been in this for a long time, and you have that level of knowledge that I'm sure that you could share with us the next time we meet.
Sure. So, so we can look into that further, for sure. Again, I do want to caveat it, we, we don't have our, our full contractors chosen yet for this project, and, and won't for a little bit of time, actually. So part of the suggested route would likely depend on, you know, who, who the actual contractors are. Some of it also depends on where the equipment is coming from, depending on what manufacturer, you know, you purchase the equipment from, they have different manufacturing facilities, warehouses, things like that. So, but certainly if there's specific routes that the town would prefer that these vehicles take, or equally if not more important, not take, we would love, you know, to, to receive that feedback if there are certain, you know, neighborhoods that maybe have been used in the past, because it's kind of a shortcut, that is a, you know, and, and that the town would not like us to use, would love to get that feedback and that information. But certainly can, you know, coordinate a site visit, and then we can have further conversations.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we've been muted.
So should we motion to continue?
You can, sure. So again, I had noted in my, my notes for the meeting that the stormwater review sort of being shared with the CONCOM is pending. The CONCOM hearing remains open? Is that true, Rennie, or? Jeff is shaking his head, yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my theory would be to sort of, you know, wait for the stormwater review and then prepare a decision for you to, you know, preview before a next meeting. Do you want to do an organized site visit, or do you want to go out there on your own?
I'd go out on my own, I think, unless everybody else wants to do it once.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way, just because our schedules are a little cuckoo. But if we set a meeting for a next time, can make sure that we have it done in plenty of time, and that if we have any questions, Karen, we could forward them to you.
Yeah. So when would we like to meet, or, well, I guess it all depends on?
Yeah, when's your continuation with the CONCOM?
So we don't have the next meeting set yet. We had the first one two weeks ago, and the only outstanding comments were the stormwater management review comments, which are currently being done by the third party.
Yep.
So we, we have not gotten those back yet, but we do expect them very soon. So as soon as we get those comments back, we'll go through them, and then we'll be, you know, depending on what kind of comments there are and how long it takes us to address those comments, we would then schedule the, the next hearing with, with CONCOM. So we don't have a date set yet, but hopefully we'll have one soon.
So we're going to make a motion, but we're going to have to push it out to?
Yeah, I mean, it's not hearing, so you can just, you know, continue it to your next available regular meeting.
So do we want to do 6:30? Because, right, we have, oh. I'm sorry, you said we have 5:20. Do you think that that would give them, give you enough time?
I would think so, Jeff. I'm just thinking, CONCOM met this Tuesday, if we could get on their next hearing, which would be May 11. I think that would work, and, and I don't, from what we've heard so far, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to be on the CONCOM hearing for May eleventh, but, um, so I, I think planning for the twentieth is good, and if for whatever reason it takes longer to get the stormwater review comments back, or the comments are, uh, more, uh, in-depth than we maybe anticipate and it takes us longer to address, we will let the, we'll let the board know, um, but I think planning for, planning for May twentieth sounds, sounds good with me.
Okay. All right.
Does that seem to work, Karen?
Karen?
All right, so does somebody, would somebody like to make a motion?
So motion to continue the site plan review for SCS Marshall, zero-one-two-two-five-two Holliston LLC, two and, blah, 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 to May twentieth.
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, Josh seconded that, so I guess we'll start, uh, Karen.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Scott?
Aye.
All right, uh, Josh?
Aye.
All right, David, aye, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
You guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
You as well.
Next, we have site plan review, uh, Jeff Zimer, eighty-seven and one-twenty-five Jeffrey Avenue.
Good evening, Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering, and I'm representing Jeffrey Zimer and Abus Instruments. We have filed.
Hi, Jeff.
May I share my screen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, she got, yes.
So we have filed for a site plan review to construct an addition, uh, to the existing building at one-twenty-five, one, uh, at eighty-seven Jeffrey Ave. The property contains, uh, three-point-one-nine acres and it's located in the, uh, industrial subdivision at the southerly intersection of Jeffrey Ave and Everett. Grasshopper Landscaping sits over here and the, uh, marijuana grow facility sits right behind that. So what we're proposing to do is to, there is two existing buildings on the property now and they are connected to one another through a walkway. You can see here under the hatched area. So these two areas connect. They have existing parking areas to the front of one-twenty-five and off to the, the side in front of eighty-seven. The parking area in front of one-twenty-five has thirty-one striped spaces with three accessible spaces. The larger parking lot in front of eighty-seven, uh, is not striped, it's paved but not striped. Each building, each of these brown buildings, the existing buildings are served by separate septic systems. The septic system for one-twenty-five sits in front of the parking, uh, in, in the parking lot in front of the building is sized to accommodate fifty employees. There is a separate septic system, uh, to the southerly side of the building at eighty-seven that's, that handles that building. Abus Instruments was founded in nineteen-eighty-six and they have seventeen employees. They do not anticipate to expand beyond thirty employees, so this site works very well for them. They have thirty-one, uh, thirty maximum employees. The parking lot here handles thirty-one and the septic system is designed to handle fifty. The proposed addition, which would sit in this area here, is nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven square feet. The existing building here is two stories. This addition will be, won't be as high as that, but it will be one story. It will handle their, manufacturing assembly and shipping area in this area here. There'll be two loading docks, uh, in this area on the side of the addition. And it will access from, uh, Jeffrey Ave. There'll be lights on the perimeter of the addition and there will be dark sky, light, lighting requirements. The surface of the roof of the addition will be infiltrated through two, infiltration systems, one just to the rear of the proposed addition and one to the side of the existing in the, in the grass areas. And that will handle up through the hundred-year storm. Uh, we're not increasing the existing pavement or changing the routing that exists now. Uh, the building will, uh, be, what will hap- this area here, which is pavement and addition, will be, uh, removed. The addition will be, uh, constructed and then connected again to this building in the rear. There is a gas line, two gas lines, actually, one that goes to this building and one that goes to a meter on the backside that will be, relocated around the addition. There are, uh, a generator pad and some AC units that will be moved to the backside of the building. All construction will come through from this area here, staging in the, uh, in the existing parking lot. And that's the scope of our project, this proposed addition. I have, uh, one, one second, I have, um, some renderings. This is the, uh, existing building here, the existing parking in the front. This is where the loading docks come in the side. This is the addition with its connection to the existing building at eighty-seven. So this is building at one-twenty-five, this is the addition, and this is eighty-seven. And then they have, uh, this is the addition, this is the side from, uh, this would be from Everett Street. This is the back of the building that faces eighty-seven. Looking up the side that faces Everett Street. And those are the, the end. So I didn't know if you, have you had any questions?
Josh didn't know, just appreciate forward, I like what I was. Is there any, uh, any plans for, again, traffic or, or trucks, traffic and everything to go out?
Well, typically, when you work, um, in this Jeffrey Ave subdivision, all traffic is required to go out Jeffrey, uh, to Washington Street and not go down Lowland.
Okay. Just 'cause I know that's a concern and I think the town has been talking a lot about that, so we're just trying to bring that up at the beginning and sort of talk about that and figure out what's the best way to enforce that. I know there's other businesses there and it's just a tough, a tough area, uh, up the other end there, so we're just trying to encourage people to go out. And I know there's ongoing discussions in regards to that, so I just thought I'd bring that up.
I think most everything that you've, you've done in this area, you've required that it goes out, uh, it, it only makes sense to go out the other way and not down.
Yeah. Yeah. Hi Karen, I didn't know if you had any, any questions?
Yeah, hi Joyce, how are you?
Good.
Um, I took a ride through there today, um, and along eighty, building number eighty-seven, um, it's, it's, it's quite tired looking. There is an awful lot of debris, right, cast-off trashcans and, and whatnot. I imagine that that's gonna all be cleaned up. I'm, I'm curious what's gonna be going on in building number eighty-seven? What is going to specifically be going on in building number one-twenty-five? And when you're in the parking lot, um, on the side where Grasshopper is, what I'm seeing is just that walkway, is that what I'm seeing? I'm not seeing a full building there from a vantage point of a bicycle. It looks like a, it looks like the caramel-colored building in your rendering is actually a building, but it's not. There's nothing really there.
Which, which are you speaking of?
The one where your hand, no, caramel, that's chocolate, go left, caramel.
I'm looking for caramel, sorry.
Right there where your hand was.
That's a garden.
No, no, back to where the two buildings connect.
There.
Yep, there. What specifically is there, like right now? Right now.
Right now, it's, oh, it's a connection between the two buildings. It's a walkway, garden shack kinda connection.
Right, so if I'm on my bo- on my bike in front of this loading dock right here.
Yep.
It looks from my vantage point, it is a building, but it's not. I'm just seeing a walkway, is that correct? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, it's a, it's a connected walkway between the two buildings.
Okay, so you're gonna dismantle the connected walkway and put this building there?
Correct.
Okay, so, and this building is going to service one-twenty-five?
Yes. So this addition and this one, this addition will be part of one-twenty-five. So it's, it'll be all the same, uh, Abus Instruments. They will occupy both the addition and, uh, office portion of the building.
With a maximum of thirty employees in there.
That's their projection.
What's, what's being done in there?
So.
Tell us about your business.
So this addition here.
I did, we're unmuted.
Okay, we're unmuted?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm Jeffrey Zimer, um, and, um, when I first moved to Holliston, uh, we started, uh.
You, you can just skip over.
Okay, I'll, I'll skip ahead thirty years. And in general, uh, what we build is scientific instruments for research and development, um, for biomed, to satellite testing, to, uh, military and research and development. So it's all very custom, very individual products, and there, they, um, suffice to say, they handle vacuum, thermal, and special, uh, environments like space and things like that to test satellites, um.
The government is our largest customer.
Right.
And we.
So this will be a secure facility.
Uh, and we, what we sell, uh, is usually large items. We don't ship a lot. We ship maybe, um, one or two items per week. I, I wish we shipped more, but it's one or two large items per week, so it's not like there's a lot of volume coming in and out.
Yeah, they're fairly large. They can exceed, uh, um, well, they can run between a few hundred pounds to, uh, ten tons. That's why the loading dock is large on this. You have to fill a satellite in them, and they go all over the world, so, uh, we have an installed base of over fifteen thousand chambers, but we make them one at a time or two at a time.
And, and you had asked about the other building. It's gonna, it's gonna be a dog, um, rescue. They have a special permit for that and they're doing a lot of work in there now, which is, I think, what you're seeing, the work being done.
All right, this, the whole lot has not been taken care of for at least, I would say, five or ten years. There's a lot of dead trees, there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. However, um, we need to get approved and in, in order to touch any of that and to improve it. I do not like messy places, um, so I usually clean them up, uh, pretty quickly.
What is, um, what is encouraging the move? You're, right, you're leaving, aren't you on October Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, wha- why? Why are you moving?
Why?
Yeah.
I have, I have about fourteen thousand square feet. The current occupant, ESCO, wants to take about eight thousand square feet away from me. Okay, that puts me in a bind, plus this is one of the highest growth periods that we've ever had. And so I need to make room for more incoming work and I would like to stay in Holliston. Uh, since I live up on Winter Street, it's a convenient drive, so.
Plus the government, um, part of the, um, stimulus is making it very advantageous for small businesses to take out, um, loans for purchases and construction right now. Okay, so right now, then, you are essentially saying that there would be about seventeen passenger vehicles and at some point, there might be thirty in and out a day, so obviously times two. And then you're saying somewhere between probably two and five large trucks shipping things out. I mean, if all goes well, let's just assume we're gonna get more business, for the circulation, 'cause it's blank here. There's, there's no statement about what would be happening, um, as far as traffic flow goes.
Right, most of, you know, most of the traffic inbound is raw materials, so it's a flatbed or UPS or something like that. And that accumulates and is made into a chamber, which then usually is shipped on a flatbed, um, out of the facility.
Right, the reason we need the space isn't for people, it's for equipment.
Yeah, um, one-twenty-five is a, uh, is a fully-officed, um, building of two floors, so its capacity was very high. Fifty-plus at least. Uh, the back parking lot, um, as you can see, is large. And that handles not just the traffic for, uh, eighty-seven, but the spillover from, uh, the offices built, uh, before, which are, you know, are pre-existing.
Are you considering any sort of demarcation between yourself and, um, the applicant? And not the, excuse me, the, um, the building next door? They seem to kind of migrate into your parking lot. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that will be handled once, once the deal is done.
Right, but that would be something that you would be.
Oh, I, I, I.
Want to do.
I don't, uh, book interlopers, so.
Okay.
Unless they're invited or they, you know, ask me nicely and, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that, so, um, but I do, uh, I do mind un, unrestricted, uh, use, you know, so.
And you have gardens marked? Are you gonna garden?
Well, those are.
Okay, so if you know me, I, I always garden, uh, if I have, uh, access to the soil. So, yeah, I like to make things look good and, uh, neat, so. I do a lot of that, so it kind of hurts me to walk around this now because it's all, it's been so poorly taken care of lately.
Yeah, it's gotten, it's gotten a little.
Long in the tooth.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it, yeah, um. What are you thinking about for, how long is it gonna take to do this kind of construction? What kind, what are we talking about for phases and timelines?
Okay, well, it depends on what the, um, Small Business Administration gives me as a final number to work with, but, but what I presented is the maximum form. Hopefully I can do it in one phase, uh, otherwise the, uh, portion, sorry, I have post-nasal drip that makes me coarse, um, but the, the portion of the, uh, caramel section, as you call it, next are going towards Everett's Avenue. A portion of that may be left off depending on the funding, uh, that I get from the SBA.
Yeah, material costs have gone up a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, so just the steel for, just the.
Forty percent.
Yeah, absolutely, and, uh.
So this is the maximum size, it, it might be scaled back. And then how long do you think, regardless of the size, that it would take to build it? What do you think? If everything went well, in your mind?
Well, well, my, my preference would be three, three months, but I know better. It's gonna probably take six months or more. But it's a lot of concrete, it's a lot of demolition. And what they built, uh, to attach to one-twenty-five was extremely well-built, so, you know, there's gonna be some So, you know, there's gonna be some demolition that's gonna require some heavier equipment to get out. Luckily, there's not much of it, so once it's out, it should be very quiet. There will be some grade change for the docks. Uh, in order to get to the, uh, larger loading dock, if we could take a look at the loading dock end of the building, uh, Joyce? Okay, so here you get to see, um, the one on, of the top image on the, uh, eh, uh, page. And on the right-hand side is a standard loading dock. The one next to it, uh, going towards the left, is a dumpster. A, uh, door, and then, and then the one, the last one, the large one, is the main product shipping, uh, dock.
So typically, though, that truck that you're showing would actually probably be a flatbed, is what you usually.
Yeah, uh, the architect didn't have an image to use for a flatbed, so.
Just from my own mind?
Yeah, well, and usually, they're a lot shorter than that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jeff, is there any way to, uh, we've had this constant discussion, and I think you've been involved in them in the past in regards to discouraging people to go towards Lowland Street. And, um, I know it's an ongoing discussion in town, but I don't, I don't know if you had any thoughts on, maybe, um, for instance, we're looking at these two trucks, how do we encourage them to go the proper way out? Uh, and I guess we've been asking everybody that comes to us, how we encourage people, or how you would as a business would discourage people from going the other way.
Yeah, um, well, since my business is a fairly picky business, um, I designate who comes and who goes as far as the outbound freight. Uh, I have no control over UPS. And the standard, uh, deliverers of material will, mm, you know, if they wanna get paid well, um, they will use the appropriate path, so I do exercise that authority, um, fairly well.
Well, a- actually, we're, we're, um, an ISO company, so we're, we're fussy about our suppliers. So we could specify, you know, on purchase orders, um, where, you know, we can say you have to enter from, um, sixteen. We also, because we're ISO, we rate our suppliers, so we can downgrade suppliers who don't follow our directions. But unfortunately, once they show up on our dock, we don't know how they've got to me. You know, we can, you know, we can put it there, we can put directions, but we don't know how they've got into our facility. But we can, we can tell them verbally when we make arrangements for a pickup. We can, we can do all of that, but you know, if, if we got a call from the police or something, saying that they know that a supplier went a wrong way, we could, you know, perhaps not use that supplier, or not use that trucking company, or, you know, downgrade them. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, most of, most of the people I ship with, you know, these things go all over the world, and a lot of them go to California, Texas, things like that, and they go by a very special truck. Um, and it's a full air ride for a ten-ton chamber, uh, all the way, and it has to get there within a certain time. So we're not talking about LTL, we're talking about full load, dedicated drives, and they follow a particular path. And, uh, so that's, well, as I say, it's as much control as anybody has over things like this. So I, I don't, I don't plan to be a problem.
Right, but, but we do, we do rate our suppliers, is my point, but we'd have to be aware of how they're getting there.
Yeah, so we do have a feedback mechanism to, uh, utilize where other people may not in the park, so.
I, Dave, I think you bring up, you know, yeah, a great point and an ongoing conversation, and, um. I mean, I think it would be definitely something that we would wanna write into the permit, like we've done with everybody else. Joyce has already indicated, right, that we have been doing that. Um, I, I just also wonder too, this conversation has been battered around in a couple of different spots, and, um, Town Council has alluded a couple of times to, uh, thinking specifically about how to write these things into the permit. And Karen, I'm wondering if that's worth having a conversation with him about.
Um, certainly, just remember that this is not a, a special permit, so this is a site plan review, so. Um, if, if the applicant is willing to, you know, take those proactive measures in terms of either posting the site or using their best efforts, I'm happy to, you know, put some language by Town Council.
So, Karen, did you have any other questions?
How do you feel about that?
Um, okay, so, um, I already have best efforts in place. I, I did, I dictate the route, so. They better follow it, at least on the outbound. On the inbounds and on the standard commercials, um, the police department has marked, uh, the road going into it and are usually sitting at the, uh, industrial side, um, of the park. Uh, so, you know, UPS should eventually pay, pay attention to that. And as I say, uh, my preference is the easiest, most direct route, which is not through the neighborhood. That is too sharp a turn for most of the trucks, um, so.
And too danger, too dangerous for most of the residents.
Well, totally, um, but as I say, most of the drivers that frequent will know the path and will be given marks accordingly, and they will do that anyway, so. That's the best way I know how to do it. Um, you can write it in, but I'm already doing it, so, you know, uh, feel free.
Okay, and how about hours for construction?
Hours for construction, uh, whatever the town, uh, reasonably permits other, uh, industrial, uh, facilities to build during.
Yeah, whatever.
There is no adjoining residential properties, so.
I rest.
Thank you, Karen. I didn't know, uh, I didn't know if Scott has any, uh, questions?
Nothing additional. I think Dave, you brought up a good point with the traffic, and then Karen, uh, covered a lot, so no, I think, I think I'm good.
Oh, okay, and did I ask you, Josh, or? Oh, okay, all right, yeah, looks, uh, looks like a very, uh, and nice project. It looks very interesting. Looks, uh, nice, well-thought-out. I like the back there, um.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, connection, yeah.
It's important that you stay in Holliston, feel that that's really important for us.
Yeah, I, I have, uh, enjoyed working on the, uh, planning board for, what, fifteen years, Karen? I don't know, something like that. So, uh, I look forward to with, with growing in Hollis. And, uh, you know, uh, we also work with, uh, the robotics team at the high school, and we're involved with Lexington Vocational and, um, things like that, so we do a lot of training of young, uh, interns and, uh, students that are interested in what we do.
Yeah, we get Keefe, Keefe Tech, uh, we get Keefe Tech students in our machine shop, too.
Yeah, yeah, so we hire local, we employ local.
And we wanna stay in town.
Yeah.
And I think it's nice to have owner-operated. Right, it's nice to have owner-operated, um, businesses for people who do live in town. And we certainly know that that means that a phone call could always be made.
Always, always. I'll even give you my cell number, promise not to give it up.
And a tour, and a tour?
Sure.
You can always come, Karen.
Yeah, as long as, as long as my customers don't have, yeah.
We got it.
Yeah, yeah, I have to notify my customers if there's, uh, well, certain customers.
Yeah.
If there's any of the zippers, so.
What, what, what do we need to do at this point? Is there?
Um, Joyce, are you still anticipating that you'll need to file a stormwater permit eventually?
Yeah, I will, um, I'll file that, uh, land development permit, whatever that you have there. That will be forthcoming.
Okay, so, I mean, in terms of a decision, um, it's up to you all, but, um, I haven't really heard any special conditions others stand, uh, you know, perhaps traffic compliance language, um. You're not talking about any parking lights, their perimeter lights? Um, I don't know if you want to restrict landscaping at all, or have a landscape plan for the future, um.
I think that would be nice, at least just what the plan is, right?
The plan will be, I think, to develop the existing landscape areas to take out some of the dead trees and make it look better.
Yeah, there, there are about, you know.
Not to develop additional planting areas, but just to build on what's there.
If you, if you went there and looked at it, there's about nineteen dead trees, uh, in various stages of falling down.
Yeah.
Uh, that need to be cleared immediately, and, uh, just to make sure a way for, uh, proper usage and safety. So those, those definitely need to be cleaned up, and the encroachment needs to be resolved and things like that. Uh, so, but in general, um, I, I like a place that looks good, and this needs help, so.
And you would be considering that you would be putting some other plantings in, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I have a tendency to like, um, you know, evergreens and other things that grow in them.
Well, things that don't need a lot of water.
Well, that's very sandy soil. The roots go fast to the water table, so.
You guys, did we lose Scott?
I just logged back in. I'm having connectivity issues. I'm, I'm joining on my phone. I'm gonna see if that.
Okay.
Better luck than that. My, my laptop, I don't know what the situation is, but, sorry, I am back.
That's all right. I just, I read your message, and I'm like, well, where did he go? All right, um, and, and I do think that we should consider, like, you know, you know, no, no, no Sunday construction and holidays. Who knows where this is gonna go to, but, um, I mean, I think that, you know, reasonable Saturday.
If there was interior work, um, inside the building, could that be on, uh, like electricians or whatever, interior to the building? Is that possible for Sunday? Just no exterior?
Doesn't anyone just get a day off?
It depends on their, uh, pump box schedule.
Sometimes they try to stage it so that they're not around other people when they're doing their work.
The bylaw doesn't allow construction on Sundays, but enforcement is rather interesting in that regard.
Yeah.
Well, it would be nice.
It's never allowed construction on Sundays.
I know, and, and just to talk about ethics.
Um, the situation of working, uh, hours, um, are working hours, not construction hours. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that you understand, construction of the building, I have no objections to any limitations besides reason, you know, being on the reasonable, uh, Sunday or whatever, uh, mandated days there is. But the company needs to be able to function twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five.
Well, there's many, it just only because sometimes.
Depends on what the government tells us we need to do.
Right, because we sometimes have, um, high priority government contracts that require, um.
You were just speaking of construction hours.
Right.
Right.
It sounds like Jeff is agreeable to no Sundays.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with the construction of the.
They're not talking about the.
We're not talking about, um, operation.
Right.
However, you do, you do raise an interesting point.
Were you? Were you gonna say something, Karen, or I just didn't know?
Um, I mean, I, I, I think that's a, I think that's a big discussion.
Of what?
Uh, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. I think that's a big discussion.
This is not a special permit application. You actually don't have, uh.
I understand that, but Mr. Jeff is asking if we would allow that.
No, I'm not asking for permission.
Asking, yeah.
I'm not asking. It's not within the scope of the permit requested.
Yeah, he's.
This is a construction.
He's just talking.
Yeah.
Okay, so at this point, uh.
Um, it would be up to you whether you want to see a draft decision, or if there's supplemental materials that would be forthcoming. It's up to you.
I think I'd like to see a draft decision.
Okay. And then, uh, Scott, did you have a, any?
No, no, I'm all set.
Okay. And, uh, Josh?
No.
No, okay, okay, so I guess at this point, um, now, when would we meet again, I guess, to just?
Go out to the twentieth?
Go out to the twentieth, okay, okay, so next time we would, we would meet is the twentieth for the. Does that, uh, work?
Is there nothing, is there no meeting sooner than the twentieth? The, I only ask, the only reason I'm asking is that they are on a, a kind of a tight schedule, which is not your problem, um, for, to get s- approved plans so that they can continue with their financing. They need site plan approval to proceed.
Right, because it's the government, it's the Small Business Administration.
There weren't, there weren't that many special conditions that were required for this. It, it seemed, uh, you know, as, aside from directing how traffic routes and, uh, hours of construction, that, that this really wasn't a complicated application, and I'm, again, I understand that's not your problem, but we're just trying to facilitate them being able to move forward with this building. He's looked at so many buildings.
Well, we have one meeting in between, but that's, uh, that's, uh, for five-five-five, so, um, that should be, uh, that's a, that itself is the, quite a bit for that. That's, I think, uh, next week, um, and then the next scheduled meeting was the twentieth, May twentieth.
So, um, just a comment here, um, this is a fairly simple, uh, permit. I have agreed to, you know, the directing of traffic and all that. Besides that, there are no material, uh, requests in this. Um, and I am under, uh, a decision point, um, that is, uh, going to force me one way or the other. And I prefer to build this in Holliston and not somewhere else. And unfortunately, you know, I have a time limit, uh, given by the SBA to get this in. If you delay me out, uh, that'll be an issue.
I'm sorry, so Josh has something he'd like to say.
What time is five-five-five on the, on the sixth? What time did we do that? Say, I'm sorry, say that again. So could we do, could we do Jeff at six forty-five?
Yes.
Yes, next week, okay.
Is that fair enough?
That's.
And the resolution will be?
A site plan, a site plan, they're gonna review the site plan, uh, document.
Okay, with the addition of the, uh.
Of the wording, we'll read the wording, we'll vote.
Right, that's, that's good, Jeff.
Okay. Just wanna read the wording.
Okay.
All right.
Right, um, it's, it's very tight.
Thank you.
So, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, well, that's our next meeting.
Great. So, do we have to make a vote to pick in the motion to move this? Josh just made a motion to move this, to, uh, um, to continue this until, um, May seven, six, six, next week, uh, at six forty-five, do I have a second?
Second.
Karen is second, okay, we'll start with Karen.
Second.
Uh, okay, uh, and you're in favor of this, I guess, uh, Karen? Yes, okay, you're, okay, uh, Scott?
Aye.
All right.
Aye, Josh.
And, uh, David, aye. So thank you all, and I guess we'll see you at six forty-five next, uh, next week, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce, Jeff, I will send you a draft certificate probably on Monday. If, if you can just forward those building elevations to me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you, thanks. Next would be, uh, Hoppingbrook Development LLC, fifty-six Point Road.
Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering, I'm representing, uh, Hoppingbrook Development, uh, LLC, uh, for, uh, fifty-six Point Road, man, I'm gonna share my screen. I am here this evening with, uh, Rich Gordon, who is on one of the phone, uh, numbers there. We have filed for a special permit and site plan review to construct, uh, an addition on the westward side of the existing building at, uh, fifty-six Point Road. Uh, we have out there right now is this, this building is constructed, it's a twenty-five thousand two hundred square foot building. We've gone through two amendments and the last amendment, uh, he had reduced, uh, we originally permitted the project to, with pavement out in this area here. It went through one addition, uh, one amendment where it reduced the amount of pavement around the backside of the building. And now we have, uh, this is the other amendment to construct an addition at the end, thirteen thousand one hundred and forty square feet with, uh, parking along the front of the building and, uh, with the existing pavement and parking over in this area here. This application proposes to, there's an existing, uh, detention basin in this area here where, uh, it will be expanded, the dark lines, right now it sits in this area here. It will be expanded in this area here to accommodate, uh, the additional roof area, will be collected through downspouts, there'll be one catch basin in the corner of the pavement which will be routed around the back, collecting the catch, uh, collecting the roof gutters as it goes into this area. There's a high point in the parking, uh, area right here where it will be collected in this direction, this has already been accommodated for any previous, uh, design uh, for the stormwater that goes to the front. And, uh, this outlet that's colored in red, uh, will be a, will be reconstructed. It has to be changed due to the size, it has to be, uh, raised a little bit. So this will be a, an addition here. The erosion control barrier will run around the backside of this. Uh, we have filed with conservation because this is in the hundred-foot buffer zone sits right here. And then it wraps around the building in this area here. And then, uh, we have also, this is, the stormwater is being peer reviewed. We just got the comments back, uh, the other day and have not had a chance to respond to them. There were just some minor, uh, either adjustments or corrections to the stormwater, nothing that will change anything materially. But we are still waiting, uh, we still have not finished that complete review, which we need to do before we can, uh, finish with conservation also. But that is the, our proposal, the proposal is to expand, uh, the building and to, uh, have the go across the front of the building here.
Okay. And this is currently leased, I guess, out, I believe.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Uh, this building is currently, currently leased, I believe, isn't it?
Uh, Rich can answer that question, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I believe.
Uh, yes, the, the, the front of the building is leased to Web Industries, who is a tenant in the park already and they are, um, using it for storage with their manufacturing facility, which is doing Corona testing kits. So our hope is that they're gonna also take the back part of the building that we're doing now, but we don't have a commitment to them, so we are just going to try to build it and permit as right for a storage warehouse facility for them or somebody else.
Josh, okay, all right, uh, Scott?
Yeah, question, you, you said this is a reduction to a prior permit? Did I, was I understanding that correctly?
No, I was just trying to go through the, the phases that this building has gone through. This is actually back to the original permit that we had with the planning board and what we had currently have with conservation have this building with pavement out back.
Okay, okay, I got you, all right.
And that's, that's currently what conservation.
Yeah. I guess, wh- what do you, what do you anticipate the, the traffic impact to be, um, for this, um, addition?
Rich, can you?
I would say pretty minimal, I mean, it's only thirteen thousand square feet with one loading dock. I mean, it may be couple trucks a day and, you know, ten, twelve parking spots.
Okay. Yeah, like, no, nothing else?
No, and if Web does take it, we would absolutely adhere to the other guidelines that they were already approved upon. We wouldn't wanna change any of that, that's all acceptable.
And I believe there was, uh, uh, the last time, there was somebody who lived back through the woods that was concerned about lighting in the back. I'm assuming that there wouldn't be any lighting in the back.
So there's, there, I think they're on here tonight to, to, for this discussion.
Oh, they are, okay, okay.
Yeah, they, probably today with some concerns about, uh, lighting when the leaves are down. And I believe that's something, I, I, I have not seen it, so that's something they will have to address.
Okay.
So I would say when this came up before, um, just so you know, we did go out and it was investigated and we, um, showed that they are, I believe the term is, uh, dark skylights, am I saying it right?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah, that's what, that's the term.
So there's only two of them on that side and we did send in cut sheets to the board and, I mean, lighting is required by code, but these lights do not shine out, they just shine down. So, um, you know, we appreciated their concern, but, um, you know, it's pretty minimally invasive.
Okay. In terms of, uh, them being required, I guess there's, well.
I, I don't really answer to it, I would get out Mark.
Okay. Uh, Karen, I didn't know if you had any questions?
Yeah, I was just going, wanted to go back to what you'd said previously, so obviously it sounds like the ideal for you would be that if Web Industries wanted this space and were able to utilize it within their, uh, business model and production base. But if they do not, where is the entrance? Where's the loading dock? Where, like, where is that?
That, that's down.
So Joyce, you could address that if you like, I mean, it's shown on the plan.
Not a phone and you can't see where I'm pointing, but this, it would be down in this area here.
I, I mean, I just, it, the scale, I obviously is not easy to, to see, so there's enough room for trucks to get in and out of there with those parking spaces being utilized and going by an existing building, like, there's not gonna be a problem there.
Yep, so they would, they would get them, they would come back in and then go back out, they would, uh, it depends on the size of the truck, of course, if it were a larger truck, it would come in, back in, and then pull out. If it were separate.
And then, there's like some little numbers down there or something, so is that like where the entrance is?
Just down here, those little numbers are just the dimensions of the building.
Okay. And it, it's just gonna be raw space or is there gonna be, uh, any offices in it? Would there be a cafeteria for people to eat?
Just bathrooms, um, and the showers, what's required for now.
Okay.
Um, just storage and warehouse.
And source of, uh, heat, I guess, is that, uh, something that's on the top of the building or?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Uh, you know, the, the air handlers, are they on the roof or they on the side of the building? I was trying to look here and see, I see something down, further down, or I don't.
Yeah, they're on the ground. They're on the ground and then they vent out the sides.
Okay. They're on the ground though, okay. I don't know if anybody else, before I open it up, for, um, any questions? Uh, did any other board members have anything they'd like to ask? So I think at this point, um, I, unfortunately, I can't see on my screen if there's any, uh, anybody with questions. Stop sharing that screen.
Let me just stop, one second.
Okay.
Hello, I'm, I'm not sure how to raise my hand on the screen, but I'm the person you were talking about that lives behind.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Lindsay Dupre, my husband is here as well, we live at three Winterberry Lane in Medway. We have a few concerns, um, since the other portion of the building has been occupied. Um, I'm not sure if it's due to wind and a dumpster or careless people or what, but there has been trash blowing throughout the woods behind our house that we go out and pick up. I know that a comment was made that the, the lights are minimally invasive, but I believe that if you purchased a home and then lights were turned on, it would be, um, up to you to decide what invasive is. Um, I'm curious if this portion of the building will have additional lighting added. And if so, if there would be any way that we could block it with maybe planting evergreens or something that would fill in over time to create a natural barrier. Also, there is a lot of wildlife that we have in the backyard, including some endangered species. I'm concerned that with, um, wetlands on both sides, that will impact that. See what else, the noise pollution also, um, with, um, another loading dock. I mean, it's not, um, terrible at this point, but depending on how often the new company is in and out, will that affect the wildlife as well? I believe the lights affect them as it is. I'm trying to think of what other points would have been. Yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, getting closer and closer to the water does, does scare me as well, um, with that wetlands on both sides of the property.
Yeah, and it, and then your, your question about the lights, um, I don't know the answer to that, but I guess we can look into that. I mean, I guess the lights are there maybe for security, but also I think a requirement. Um, but on the other hand, it's, the lights are shining into the woods, I guess. I don't know if that's a security thing or, I don't know if that's, you know, somebody's walking back there because it's a commercial building and they fall and there's, it's dark back, I don't, I don't know the answers, but it would be nice to try and find a way to block that. Cause I, I do remember your concerns last time about those lights, um, maybe if there's some evergreens or something that we could plant back there that would kind of block the light, um, but I don't know the answer to whether lights can be turned off or what can be done about them, um.
I mean, I'm, we're open to options, like I said, you know, evergreens or something that would not only block the light from us, but from into the woods, so that, I know there's a lot of animals that kind of come through. We kind of watch them through out, you know, the different times of day and this is kind of like a little path for them. So that, we've seen a reduction in just, the easiest animal to count is the deer. And I mean, I can't say for sure that it, it is due to the lights, but I, I don't know any other changes that have been made over the past six months. And I think that if we could block as much of the light as possible, that may increase them, encourage them to come back or what have you.
Okay. I didn't know if, uh, Joyce or the captain had any thoughts in regards to evergreens in the back there? Um, I don't know if there's room for that.
Well, the, the, it, there really isn't, well, there isn't room for evergreens to be affected here because, um, the, the lighting is high on the building and the, and the slope, slope down from the back, but I don't know, Ri- Rich, maybe you can address.
Yeah, so, the new addition, um, would probably only add, you know, we have to just do the bare minimum requirement and it is for security and safety. Um, I believe the new addition would only call for one more light. Evergreens would really not be an answer because the lights are like twenty feet off the ground. You know, but they do aim down, you know, and I am sensitive to her concern, I appreciate that. I would say also as far as loading dock and traffic and noise, this new loading dock is on the opposite side of the building, so I don't think that would have any effect on, um, her side. I don't think you'd see it or hear it at all. Um, and as far as, um, invasion of the woods and species, there would be no more clearing. The site is already cleared, so we would just be working off of the existing perimeter that is already cleared and grubbed. So there would be, you know, there's, there's no more invasion into the woods, um, to that point, which is a great point. But it's already cleared and it's pretty much done. So this is just a new addition in the back area that is already just a dirt area right now.
I don't know if, uh, was there anybody else and I don't, I can't see if there's any other, I see somebody has, uh, I believe it's, um, Don Ralph?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, good evening, thank you.
Thank you, I'm, uh, Don Ralph at five Winterberry Lane in Medway in Annata. Just to echo what, um, the previous participant said, the lights are clearly an issue on this, if you lived on this side. I know they're dark lights, but they're very visible, particularly during the six months of the year when there are no leaves. I understand the evergreens may not be the, a solution. I would ask that a. I would ask that a alternative solution be considered if one could be developed. So that would be my first comment. My second comment would be, will there be any restrictions to hours of operation? Although this is a warehouse and it has limited activity. Um I've lived here for sixteen years. I can tell you, um I've been awakened in the middle of the night several times since this building has opened. Typically, I think it's a dumpster. Um I can't, to be clear, not sure, I believe it's this building, but it could be another building in the park. Um but something has clearly changed in the last several months. And the third question or um request I would have for the board is, um and for the applicant, is what assurance can you give that uh changes to the drainage and the uh wetlands that you propose will not interfere with the aquifer that feeds the wells um here on the folks on this street? That probably is my biggest concern. And I appreciate you giving me the time to comment.
Thank you very much for your comments. The first one I was wondering before I uh I guess hand it over to Joyce or the to the applicant. Is there any way of thinking of these lights? Is there any way to put those on a uh what do they call that when somebody motion sensor? I that's just trying to think something here that we could do that would, because it sounds like it's this is an ongoing problem, maybe motion lights or something. I don't I again, I don't know what's code and what's not, but um you know, I don't know at night. But anyway, I'll let you uh answer or try to uh answer his questions.
Sure, I I'll jump in and then Joyce, you can answer the drainage question. Um I I'd be open to motion lights. I I don't have any issue with that at all. Um I would just have to ask the building inspector if that's acceptable and if it is.
I'm just I'm coming up with these things myself. I don't whether that is or not, I don't I don't know whether that's code or not, but.
Um yeah, so well, again, I I'd have to ask the building inspector and if he says there's no issue with that. Um I think that's fine. I I certainly don't have any problem with it. Um so I'm open to that and I I would accept that as a clause, um just as long as, you know, Mark is okay with it. So um you know, that could be out there. Um and then as far as the dumpster, I do know that Webb only changes dumpsters during the day. Um so if there's other dumpster noise that could be from another building, um unless it's other noise that I'm not aware of, but um during the night, they only have um vans. We have gone through the permitting process, as you know, already, and they had some very strict guidelines. As far as I know, they've been adhering to them. Um and that would continue. Um and then as far as the drainage, that's really a Joyce question.
Sure, so the stormwater from the site, uh there is very strict guidelines on how that is handled. And it's designed so that it doesn't increase the volume or or uh rate of runoff from the project. And that's undergoing a peer review right now. So we we do our stormwater design, uh we submit our calculations to the board. They've sent it out for a third-party review, which uh it's been done now. And uh and again, it's designed to accommodate the increase in impervious surface within the the stormwater detention components.
So I think at this point, um I guess unless there's any more questions, um we this would be continued um because um there's still some things, the stormwater and so forth. Um unless, again, there's any members of the board, and I don't see any other public questions. So at this point, we would continue this uh hearing.
Can I just add one thing?
Yep, yes.
Hi, this is uh Mike Aller at four Winterberry Lane. Um.
Oh, okay.
What's that?
Oh, oh certainly, yes.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what uh you know, we're further away than our two other neighbors who already spoke. Um but it would be appreciated if it could do something with the lights. They we're again, further away, but if we can see them like we can see them, I can only imagine that that they have to deal with something that's more more of a problem.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I think that, yeah, that's certainly now this is.
Thank you.
You're the third person sort of concerned, and maybe we can, again, I I don't know the code on that, but uh we'll figure it out. Maybe there's a way to.
We'll we'll find out and come back to the next meeting with um some solution.
Solution, okay.
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
All right.
So how about if we motion to continue?
Okay, Karen has made a motion to continue. Uh Josh has seconded. I guess we'll start with Josh.
Uh should we set a date? A date?
Oh, yes, we should set a date, yes. I'm just sorry, I'm jumping ahead here. The May twentieth?
Twentieth, yeah.
May twentieth at uh seven, we have something at seven fifteen or?
No, we don't have anything there, do we?
Yeah, you moved um the solar project.
Mm-hmm, so that was the, I forgot what time that was, did we say this?
It's not a hearing, so.
Oh, okay, so seven fifteen, okay, so seven fifteen, May twentieth, okay. So uh you've seconded, you've uh said, I, uh Karen.
Aye.
Okay, uh Scott?
Aye.
And David, aye, okay. But thank you all very much and uh we'll see you on May twentieth at seven fifteen.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, good night.
Make a motion to shut the meeting.
Well, next we can.
Oh, we have another public hearing.
Now we've got the seven thirty public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendments. Um so.
Looks like through a big crowd.
Yeah, so.
(laugh)
Yeah. Yeah.
Woo!
Nice.
Get that out.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, this is not heavy lifting zoning, so um I I think that the deletion is um is obvious. Um the moratorium has has expired and the the words on that page are simply taking up space in the bylaw. Technically, this just requires you to, under um section five of chapter forty A, you just need to make a recommendation to the town moderator. Um you can do that in writing or verbally at the town meeting, so traditionally you've sort of done both. Um but you do need to have the public hearing recommendations prior to the town meeting. So I think you can at least vote on that portion instantly if you like, or just couple the two together. Um if you'd like me to just elaborate on the second proposal. Um not so self-explanatory, but in terms of um current events in zoning, um there's been some action by the land court uh with regard to the Dover amendment that is exempt uses under the state law. The words that are used in the state law are solar access. Uh Department of Energy Resources has taken that to literally mean solar power, system generation system. And so um the court, the land court, not, and so this is not binding on towns, but this is the legal direction that the Commonwealth seems to be going in, is that these these uses are being treated as exempt uses, uh meaning that you can um reasonably regulate them, but you cannot prohibit them. So the current um bylaw provisions prevent them in all of the residential districts, allowed by special permit in the industrial and the commercial zoning districts. Uh the zoning board had this um example of um large-scale solar in the AR two residential zoning district on a farm. Uh and they were advised by town council to have that applicant withdraw their application because they had no jurisdiction. Um and then that came to you, and we went through the exercise of site plan review only on the project, which which meant that, one, you could not control the hours of of construction um and any other special permit type restrictions that you ordinarily would have. Um so our the recommendation uh that Mark and I gave the zoning board um through discussion was to uh allow the use by special permit in the AR one, AR two, and R one zoning districts. Um those would be specific for someone who would have a site large enough to do a large-scale solar generation system, so that's anything over two hundred and fifty KW, which is essentially over an acre. Um the smaller area districts of village, center, residential, and commercial, we left as prohibited. You simply would have to sort of assemble a bunch of parcels downtown um in order to do a large-scale system. Um so the proposal from the zoning board, on your behalf, since you would be the special permit granting authority, um is to require a special permit in those three zoning districts. Um and it just requires um an amendment to the to the large use table, which is section three. Um it's spelled out in section F two, that is, large-scale solar power generation system.
Can you share this? Can you share that screen?
There you go.
Thank you. So I guess the only thing that's running in my head is we had it not permitted, right?
Yes.
And now we're throwing in a special permit, and I wonder, like, like it 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 kind of gets us into this kind of overlay thing again. You know, I I I guess I just don't understand why we would do this at all.
Oh, because a use variance is not allowed? Right, so town council is saying that even though Holliston has a mechanism to permit things that are not allowed by use variance, the use variance standard would not be tolerated by the court in these situations because of the prohibition. So the recommendation is to either allow it by special permit where it is likely to occur, that is, to reasonably regulate it, or to, as you're saying, develop an overlay district for specific sites.
And then that way, we would be able to have a conversation around the hours and whether or not it meets the requirements or if things needed to be screened. This would give us the power to be able to do those things.
Right, so for instance, um for solar, there's generally a decommissioning bond requirement. You do not have the authority to require that under your site plan review. That's a very important component.
Okay, got it.
If all of a sudden technology changes and sites begin to be abandoned. Same with what you were talking about in terms of, you know, hours of construction, duration of of construction. Those issues that are time-related are not site plan review issues, rather they're special permit issues.
Gotcha.
So we sort of we sort of have broad blanketed this. I'm not sure that anyone would propose one in the R one zone, although there are Holliston farms in the R one zoning districts that, you know, could have either rooftop or ground-mounted systems that could cumulatively equal a a large-scale system, so. These are non-accessory systems, so these are standalone commercial systems. These are not, you know, providing your house with the equivalent amount of electricity that you use. These are commercial systems. They could be rooftops, they they could be rooftops.
Right, if a farm were bigger.
Right, so like the one the one that you did on um Littlefoot Farm uh is a mixture of of two, you know, two types of systems, so it's it's both.
Okay. Thank you, that makes much more sense to me.
Okay, so do we want to have a discussion? Does anybody have thoughts on either of these? Or do we want to vote on them at once?
So Karen, like you have in your notes that needs recommendation to town moderator, so that would be we could have you write something as well as somebody could stand up and speak.
Yep.
And I suppose that would be the ZBA since they're the ones sponsoring this.
Yeah, Mr. Love is, I think, intending to come to town meeting. Um but again, you know, again, you guys would be the permitting authority because it's a use that requires site plan review, so you guys are the one-stop shopping. So even though this was this issue arose in front of the zoning board in terms of the legal interpretation, um you ultimately would be the permitting authority.
I'm good.
So, okay, uh Scott?
Yeah, that all makes sense to me, I think. I think it works out. Um I'm I'd be fine with voting on both of them together.
Okay, and you'd be fine also, okay. So I guess at this point, uh if somebody would like to make a motion, unless there's something else you want to go through or work.
I'm good.
Okay. So, okay, Josh has made a motion to approve both of these. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scott is seconding, okay, I'll start with you, Scott.
Aye.
Uh Karen?
Aye.
All right, Josh, uh aye, and David, aye, okay.
I love David, aye.
So that is, yeah, yeah.
David, aye.
Yeah, yeah, I should probably watch the video. It looks pretty ridiculous, but anyway. Uh on to the next thing, the next public hearing is at seven forty-five, and it's almost nine. Uh public hearing is, uh I can read through this, but everybody has this in front of them. This is to amend the subdivision rules and regulations, five point three, stormwater management. Um if you want, I can read through the whole thing, but I think everybody has it here.
Well, we have about ten pages of people here, so.
Yeah, so um what what I'd like you to do is just sort of, um if you have any questions, if you can send them my way. I know that Jason had some interest in this issue. Um I I called off our consultant for the evening because I knew there would be time constraints. Um and I would like to clean up the the first component of this, which is the general bylaw regulations. Uh the the subdivision rules and the reg for special permits and site plan review, those two issues are very easy to deal with. Um you know, what we're trying to do is sort of take stormwater out of the other regulations and have them live, um have all the guidelines and the procedural permitting components um live within the regul- within your regulations for stormwater specifically. That's so that we can track them more easily. And because the the bylaw has a a two-stage uh level of review, so that there's um staff review, or I would propose that you authorize staff review for projects that disturb between ten thousand square feet and an acre. EPA requires you to have a bylaw of to permit issues over an acre. Um so when you see the the NFTs um components come from, like CMG's peer review, they're talking about that federal standard. For stormwater, it's essentially registration, self-registration. Um Holliston has opted to have a little slightly different threshold for a more informal process. That process is, you know, primarily erosion and sedimentation control for smaller projects for things like even new single-family homes. Um so we've tried to lay out sort of a two-tier regulation, one more informal and one really requiring um full-on uh engineering. Um yeah, they're complicated, I think, I counted fourteen pages of of nasty regulations. Uh we're trying to simp- Uh, we're trying to simplify them a little bit so we can pare down some things like the, um, I think I noted in the last, um, comment on, under number one that the only Charles River watershed-specific, um, TMDL, which I, I'm sorry, I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but that, it's essentially a criteria for water, for impaired waters. The only one that Charles River makes you, um, have an enhanced performance stand- standard for is Fox verse removal. Um, and so we will eliminate the text that shows all the other TMDLs. That loses almost a page of sort of extra performance standards out of the draft there. Um, so I, I would propose that, you know, if you do get a chance to walk through these, or I can walk you through, um, in detail in the future, but we're going to try to, you know, go at the drafts a little more clearly. Um, I've discussed this with the staff downstairs, um, about things that we can do internally in terms of inspections and improving communication, in terms of things like installation of, um, roof drains, um, that are sort of daylighting, uh, rather than being infiltrated on site. We had this issue arise with Summit Point where the developer is taking the foundation drains and right down to the edge of the yard and they're daylighting into the stormwater basin, which is very interesting, because they're designed for, you know, stormwater from the roadway systems, but not necessarily the individual homes. Anyway, we're trying, it's, it's a process, it's not our everyday work. So, you know, for me, there's a lot of jargon that is new and confusing and so Rebecca from CEI can sort of give you an overview of what we're obligated to do. Um, one thing is that we are obligated to implement something before, before June thirtieth. So, you know, we will get back to the draft, uh, I sent her some comments today. Um, and if you could just continue out to sometime before June thirtieth, that would be much appreciated.
That sounds better than what I was thinking, I'm like, you're trying to do this for town meeting?
No, this is, yeah, so these are all regulations that the, right, of the board. Um, and we've gotten some decent feedback from local, um, engineers. Um, David, I've been working on some comments for me as well. Uh, it's good because it, it's interesting to have all these engineers, you sort of identify problems that they have. Um, and a lot of them have experienced in a lot of other towns. Um, so, you know, trying to keep the process simple but thorough. Um, and it's, it's one of those unfunded mandates, unfunded federal mandates that, um, it, it's difficult for towns to deal with. We, we are totally reliant upon, you know, a third-party consultant because we don't have any internal capacity to do these peer reviews for stormwater. Um, we, we have enough problems maintaining the town system and trying to meet the requirements. It's interesting.
So we would.
And I'm not sure how I got elected to manage stormwater stuff.
When would you, uh, we could continue it out to, I guess the furthest point would be, well, we're, we're saying we have a June seventeenth meeting, is that too far out?
I would think so, I, if you would do it on the twentieth, that would be, that would be fine with me.
Make a motion, move, move it to the twentieth.
Okay, Josh has made a motion to move it to the, to.
The twentieth.
Continue the public hearing to, uh, uh.
May.
Seventeenth, I think we said, June seventeenth?
May twentieth.
May twentieth.
Oh, May twentieth, sorry. May twentieth, okay. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, cool, a second, and we'll start with Karen.
Aye.
All right, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
And David, aye. Just for Karen, David, aye.
David, aye. It sounds like something that's be like in Karate Kid, David, aye.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to stay here till ten?
Yes, sir.
Not till the.
Sure. Um, I guess, other than, so you've made a motion.
I have, three times.
All right, so do I have a second?
Second.
Scott has seconded, and we'll start with, uh, Karen.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
And David, aye.